What union does the police, is that?
They have their own union.
It's a collective union.
Okay. And that's specific to each town?
Yes.
It's not a national union then?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Good evening. I wanted to bring up a couple of facts on the, just to answer some questions that's been going on. As far as the comprehensive plan, more than forty-four percent of our township is open space and conservation. And I think that's much higher than most townships are, so I just wanted that fact to be put out there. The comprehensive plan also dealt with the police, and they were, in our surveys and things like this, showed that they had great satisfaction for the present police department and the roads both. One of the things that I'd like to bring up is, I'd like to have some information as a request from the board, to look into the escrow money that's been put into the intersection of South County and Westchester Pike, or whichever hell it may call it.
Road, is it?
Yeah, South County and Westchester.
I've heard for years that they, each different developers added to that escrow for that intersection. A number of years ago, the board at the time decided not to use foot-up lights, changed the plan, and I'm interested in what that contract is, when they assign that for an escrow, to do a particular thing to a particular place, and how that's been changed. I have some great concerns for that. I still think that intersection needs some help. I've gone by there when it's raining, and the water comes flying down that South County Road like crazy, and if it's ice, you know, it turns to ice, it's an ice rink, and nobody's gonna stop. And I think we need some ditches, culverts, or some retention basins, just to catch the stormwater in that area. That road is really old, and it just, it does not keep up with all the new development, and the old and the new that's two developments that are coming in there next, too. So, I think we need to look at that. I'd like to see what that is, if you recommend I put in a right to know, or whether we should run it through.
Well, I mean, just briefly, a couple of years ago, I know we had TPD, which is the traffic planning firm we had used before, because the initial idea was to put a red light there, but then the stop signs went in, and the accidents seemed to go down. I don't think we've had many issues there since. The time was to, because of the water runoff, what you're saying, to scale back that road, and what the cost of that would be, and that's what the intention was, but we, Joe, you may remember, we never really heard back from TPD as far as what that would come to tell, how much the cost would be, and all that.
Correct, correct.
So, I mean, that's something we could probably reach back out to them and see.
Scale back the road?
Yeah, I think it's about three hundred thousand. I think, in that account right now, but we don't know the cost of scaling back that road to help with the water runoff. So, that's where it kind of stood last time.
Two hundred eighty-two thousand.
Two hundred eighty-two thousand. So, that's where that one stands.
What do you, what do you mean by scaling back the road?
I think the thought was to, so you may remember, right when I came on to what they were gonna do there, instead of the light.
They're gonna resurface that whole road, South County all the way down to Westchester Road.
Make it more level, so when the rain, so it doesn't travel, I guess north, west will be the direction.
Right.
I mean, that's the way the rain flows and everything.
It's a little more level.
When all the rocks come down, if you're coming, if you're headed north on County Road, you cross the passage over Westchester Road, there's rocks sitting right by the road after that rainfall.
Yeah.
So, that was, they were gonna scale that off and level it.
Level it down.
Yeah, they don't have, no ditches or anything.
Personally, I don't think a stoplight there, I think a four-way stop sign is sufficient.
But the water runoff is an issue.
Oh, yeah, it's huge.
Someone said the ditch was changed. My neighbor said that.
Well, that's, the idea is to change the ditch.
Yeah, well, somebody said they did change it, that's why they have the runoff now.
I don't think so, but we'll have to look back into the TPD.
I don't think we had any more, I don't think, you know.
Should we then have to have a different type of contract for doing something different with that escrow money?
Possibly, I mean, like I said, TPD is our traffic planning company that we use. I think we loaded on them at the reorg meeting, that they're the ones we use, but we'd have to reach back out to them and see what the status of that project is, and what they feel the cost would be, to see if we have enough to cover and to fix that.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we had enough, or vice versa, if we have too much, and we're not gonna do anything there, did the developers then have refunds coming for all the budget?
No, I think after this much time, I think eventually it goes back to the township, I think, but again, we'd have to look into, excuse me, find a print on that to make sure.
Okay.
What we can do left.
All right.
Right?
Thanks.
Thanks, Evan. Mr. Rhodes?
Buddy Rhodes, East Palm Hill, twenty-one, sixty-six, Stralsburg. I've just hit on one, I've just heard two things. I have something in reference to Sunshine Law, in reference to the road department at South County Road and Westchester Road. There's been a lot of accidents up there. I know my son was in a hospital for about two months. It's been, that's one of the high-rate accidents there. That, and there were Buck Run and Stralsburg Road and Buck Run Road, that was a known one. And they did put four-way stop signs up there to help, and then the hump going down to your house, track and trailers always got caught because of the dip, and there's always runoff from the farm there. That's where the water, and the tag and guys gotta get down there and sort it all the time. It does need an inlet down there on the right-hand side, down at the bottom. You put a box in there, you put a grate in there, it catches the water, right? The stop sign, sometimes the people coming out of Coast Road, going to Westchester, going to the college, they get right through that stop sign, but I know a couple of times, I almost got nailed. So, that's something that is tough for the police, because to sit up there, it's tough to sit up anywhere there, to even watch it, I mean, all right? And in reference to the police department, which the gentleman brought up, we are on their contract, the union contract. I do wish the board to get more involved. We hired a solicitor to represent the township, you know, on the last contract, and everybody's worrying about it, because I've been in union all my life, and I agree with some of the union things, but they go to arbitration, and when you go to law arbitration, it's a lot of time, they tend to go, you have three arbitrators, so you could lose more. I just hope that we have, the biggest budgets is police department, the very department and trash. They're the three biggest budget. Of course, we have a police department, one point two million or something, and it's gonna go up, you know, just like everything else, but it's, I heard something about, do you check with other departments? I've checked with a lot of other departments, and of course, if you talk County Township, which is a first-class township, and you talk Coast Road, of course, their budget's is higher, but if you talk with some of those other townships, their budget and the amount of police office they have, we have a good police department, but there's something for everybody to reveal. The police chief is not part of that contract. He's supposed to be representing the township, all right? They have their steward, or whatever you want, you know, to represent the police department. So, I'll let that lay there, that's something that, you know, coming up, there, like the gentleman did say, one point two, the way the contract can get him, you gentlemen are gonna be looking at, going again, you know, you do have to look back, and you go back to each department. Each department wants something, all right? You know, I want something, I wanna do it to Cor, but financially, I can't get it. So, that's something you had to look out for us. What I do wanna talk about is the Sunshine Law. It's an open government freedom of information, open to the public. The law requires the township to take action on business in the public meetings, which we do. Meetings must be had prior notice, that the public can attend, which we do, so we can commit before the supervisors. We have the right to have access and have copies of public records, you know, we gotta fill out papers if you want information in there. We need to post our minutes to our township, this is something we don't do. We need to post our minutes to the township website after the minutes are approved, you know, once the supervisor's approved the minutes, they should be posted on the website. Also, our agenda for our township meetings should be prior to the meeting. I know it's up to the chairman, because the secretary, the treasurer comes to you, and you set it, help, that's what the chairman does, basically, and if the other supervisor has something on the agenda, that the public should be able to know by, if people are looking on the computer, to see what the agenda is, all right? And a lot of people, anytime you get people to come here, if somebody's up there texting them and bringing people in here for an issue, all right, the public wants to know what's on the agenda, just like they were gonna be having a meeting about the budget, or discussing something about the weeds, which some people are concerned about, and also any constructions going on here.
I believe the minutes, just real quick, Buddy, the minutes, or not the minutes, the agenda, we post that to the website before the meeting?
I posted the Friday before the meeting.
Friday before the meeting.
All right, how about the?
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
It is out there.
Well, I've been looking, you know, I'm not a whiz on the computer, but I do look at these files from the website, all right, and as far as the agenda, I look for that. Sometimes I call a couple supervisors, I can see what's on the agenda, that's because I'm concerned, but a lot of residents, if they knew what was on the agenda and it affected them, they would come. Hopefully, they would come, just because they're interested in the township, but a lot of people, as you gentlemen see the last time, I don't see a lot of people, other than the people that work for the township, and a couple other people that then come to meetings, but all the other people that used to sit up here and yell and say, "Speak up," or something, I don't see them here anymore, all right? And maybe that's a good thing, but I would like to see them come here to be part of this township. One thing that should have on there is the residents' comments. Now, I'm not attacking, because I know it's a lot of work, taking minutes, but it should be a summary of this gentleman, what he was discussing, what Mr. Scott was discussing, or Mr. Rhodes, or any other resident that comes up here. It should be a summary, not just say, Harry Dash spoke, you know, and where he's from. It should have a summary of what he was discussing, what the question. Same with the supervisor voters. When you vote, you don't have to say why you vote, all you have to say is yes or nay. There's nothing else that you have to explain your vote. Hopefully, you vote your conscience, and you know, voting for the best for the community. The other thing I would like to say, we should have a document center where the minutes from, say, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, can be found in a folder that you can look back on the minutes. A lot of times, I would have to come up here and ask for the minute book, and sit down and get all the way back there. There should be a, you know, it's high-tech now, you know, before, we didn't have it.
All the old minutes are on the website?
Uh, they have it far back, because, you know what?
Not sure how far back, but...
No, that's what I wanted to know, because one thing sticks out in my mind, and Mr. Chairman, you were part of it, and I think there was another supervisor. You cannot have a township meeting with two supervisors, and we've conducted a meeting, and that just solicitor should have notified you that. You cannot conduct a meeting in township business with two supervisors. You have to have a quorum.
We didn't do any business that night.
You discuss things, and you pay for a solicitor. The minutes, that meeting, once you didn't have the supervisors here, we shouldn't have had to pay for that solicitor for the next two hours. I was here at that meeting, all right, and the ex-supervisor came here and complained about it. There was discussion, and I'm not, the only reason why I'm saying that, I don't want it to happen again. I mean, that's water over the dam, but we have to conduct a meeting with a quorum, all right? Just like one supervisor not here tonight, we have a quorum. So, whatever business you have, you take a vote on it, and if it passes, or if it doesn't, but you can't conduct a township meeting with two supervisors, and we cannot be paying a solicitor to stay here at whatever grade he was doing. The other question I would have is in reference to, I know a lot of things, people make threats, but I do have a problem with this zoning officer, and I talk to him. He can get down Buck Run Road, we brought up about Weavers, there are signs all over the township, and if I come up here and ask somebody, did they get a permit? I mean, you can get down to Mortonville, without mentioning the person, there's five or six signs there, on barns, in the wetlands, all over, that people didn't get permits, all right? But if it's Buddy Rhodes, or any other person come up here, and I can tell you this, and this, I know this for a fact, if all of a sudden a resident come up here, the next week or so, you will have a zoning officer, you would have, I'll just say, without going in, I'll just let it go there. A lot of times, people have come here, and the next week or so, they would have somebody from the township siteating them, or looking around their property, all right? And I don't wanna see that happen. I do want our zoning officer, and I think I brought up to the chief, he can come from Buck Run, and I don't even know who they are. There's fifteen or twenty cars sitting up there, all right? You can see them right there, they had two of them for sale, and it's on the right-hand side, and it's the first house on the right, right before Ramsey's, Chuck Ramsey, all right? So, there is a lot of things. The zoning officer, I mean, he sees a lot of dollars, but he doesn't go out. The only time he goes out, if somebody from the township calls up, all right? That's the only time he goes around. You know, we have a lot of places where we have vehicles on a historical schoolhouse, all right? We brought up an issue, I'll just tell you, get down Buck Run Road, all right? And that's going down like you're going to get Avondale. You look off to the right. We talked about Weaver, and they worry about Weaver's mulch being too high. I'll just say, there's a contractor down there that has logs, and the police department goes down for a shooting range once in a while, and the people complained about that. But in reference to logs and mulch back there, all right, and that's a business, too. So, we're attacking certain people for alleged running a business, but there are other people that nobody does anything, and nobody wants to say, oh, that neighbor there has that and that thing. I don't like to dime people out, but I don't like to be harassed by the township, by the zoning officer, or by the police department, all right, or by any supervisor up there. I'm just saying myself.
Let's stop for a personal issue.
No, that, well, I'm a person, I know a resident, so I can speak for myself, Mr. Chairman, all right? And basically, that's what I'm saying for the rest of the board, someone or two of them are new, all right? So, everybody up here talking about a budget, these two, Carol and Mr. Wilson, and I know I'm speaking, I'm not, but they had to look over the budget and saw it now. The other three have been here, and they make recommendations. So, thank you.
Public comment, Mr. King, quickly?
Quick? If you're pretty clear. I'd like to know about stormwater. I live on Misty Patch, and there's two developments above me, and a lot of water comes over, and it comes over, and down, down on Misty Patch, cuts out the water in my development, on my house. And I just wanna know about, Chris Delapena has been, in the past, six years ago, and worried about the water that comes down. And one of the developments that's right below me, there's a lot of stone coming down, and it's the one that's building that last house. And I just wanna know, what are they gonna do about it? You know, that all the stone that comes down? Because water comes on this side, under the road, comes down this way, and then this development up here comes down this way, and I got a pipe this big, you know, and it overflows the water. When we had that heavy rain about two weeks ago, I've been cleaning up my stream since then, and I wanna know, normally, Chris Delapena has to see it, because something's wrong with that pond.
I don't know if that can... Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think he would need to see it while it's happening. I don't know if he has in the recent past, and I know at one point, he was looking, and I don't remember off the top of my head the results of that, but you know, it's something we can remind him to go look at, when it's raining, when it's heavy rains, what that looks like, and see if there's some deficiencies that he sees.
Well, I'm waiting for him to stop then sometime. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
One other quick thing, Steve, Chairman, is in reference, when we were out near South County Road, there's a farm out there, and there's a historical cemetery there, and I think Mr. Wilson was there with me, Joe was there, and I think Ed was there, in reference to this cemetery that needs to be cleaned up. But that developer, and there's only about five homes in there, and you seen them, that people come here and complain, but some of them people sold the house and got out of there. We've never forced that development to put a top coat on there, and I think if you wanted to go out there, I think you gentlemen was out there, you see all the concrete pipes that were way down there that was for storm drain, you know, concrete pipe that now is deteriorated, because it's sit there for about eight years. If you had one of the four homes in that development, you'd be complaining, all right? Because that's up to supervisors to find out how much escrow, that's what's been discussed. I know we have new people in the office there, but this is something we've been discussing for years, the escrow, just like the one gentleman from the planning commission talked about that intersection. I can tell you about that intersection, how much money. The one person don't want a traffic light down there, and he owns that intersection, all right? And basically, in reference to the contractors, the one contractor told you, it'd be a whole day in hell trying to get any money out of him, because he left, and he had one lot left in there. He sold that development to another developer that you now have, so you don't have the money from the developers to pay for the intersection to get fixed up. You know, that's something you have to look about on the escrow for the four developers that were involved in that. You know, the question was thrown to you tonight, Steve, all right? And that's something that you gentlemen and ladies got to do your homework, because you're gonna have Buddy Rhodes here again, and some other residents, because we're concerned, just like the gentleman in front of me. We're concerned about our finances, this township, which affects us. And we had developers come here and leave, and we, you know, just like we had to have the one roof blacktop, all right? And that's something, two of you weren't here, but the other three were. Them people came here in arms, in reference, because he did plow the driveway out, I mean, the road out, but it only had the binder in there. It never got topped. Now it is topped, so those people don't come here anymore. But I mean, it's just that developers leave, and they come and go, and they throw the ball into somebody else, but your board's the ones getting yelled at, or asked questions from the people that live in that development. And I'm just telling you, the person that's been out there, and I'm gonna be working at the cemetery, and hopefully, other people get involved to clean it up. But that development is a disgrace. The inlets are high, the binder, you know, they didn't do it right the first time, and that's something an inspector, we hire an inspector to go out there while the people put the blacktop down, and put the curving down. That curving's all shot. That means, once that development's ever finished, you know what happens once they get d-turned-over? It goes back to the road department and the board of supervisors. So, if you count on your engineers to make sure the contractors are doing the work, I'm counting on you folks to keep the developers in check. You know, Buddy Rhodes lived on Stralsburg Road, and the only thing I don't have to worry about getting nailed in the morning, with all the people going to Westchester. Police do park up in a couple driveways, but the time they get them, I remember one time, a motorcycle went down the road flying, and the police went up there, he would have to radio ahead to Emeryville to pick that guy out, because he had one of them crotch rockers that was moving. So, I just say, there is problems, and I would like you to keep abreast on the developers. I mean, that one development, you, oh, but not there, and that is a disgrace. I know you wouldn't wanna live in that development, you live in a nice development, and a lot of us live in a residential house, but if I live in that development, I would be here on your question and thinking. Mr. Scott?
Is Weaver Mulch Zone commercial, agricultural, manufacturing? What's its zone?
Think it's commercial.
It's agriculture.
I'm not positive off the top of my head, but I have to look at the zoning map.
Both.
Both.
Both, uh, both what?
Part of it. Two acres is supposedly commercial, and the rest of it's agricultural.
How about the place across the road?
Two acres of it is commercial.
An acre.
Yeah.
That is, that was a farm.
So, only about two acres are commercial, and the rest is supposed to be agriculture? Okay. Thank you.
Just a place right across from Weaver's, and a lot of you's go there, and you can look at furniture. That's another gentleman that has two signs, one's on concrete, one's up, all right? That was the old farmhouse, that's where the cattle was, and at one time, herds like chickens and stuff in there. Now, it is a furniture store. You wouldn't know when that was, okay? Just like the planning commission doesn't know. Half of those weren't on the planning commission when that was in there. That's another thing, all of a sudden, these businesses pop up. I'm talking business, I'm not talking somebody that does plumbing and have one truck parked in the driveway. I'm talking about a business that has people coming in there. Do they have the parking, the handle of it? That's one of the big things. The same with Weaver. Weaver's a nice contractor, nice guy, and he has mulch, and we had complaints about the mulch being too high and stuff like that, but he also runs a factory in there that works it and makes trailers in the back, all right? So, he has multiple businesses in that so-called agriculture area, and that's something, you know, that, yeah, I buy mulch off of him, so I'm not saying, but I do know he has other businesses there that are not part of the original business, and just like record stepping, when he did the demolition, no permission to that, and he got, he came out of the place, and he come there, and then all of a sudden, he come back about a year later, them records disappeared in the office. So, I just say, and you can look in the office, that people came here and complained about that, and that's one thing I was, I asked a couple supervisors, when you come on board, you go to each department, and I'm sure the chief wouldn't mind, and the road department wouldn't mind, for you to go in there and do an inventory of what we have. I did tell one supervisor, and I bought the tractor. The only way the supervisor found out that tractor was up in the mountains, because the guy that took it up there needed a water pump, and whoever put the water pump up there sent the bill to township. So, why was that international bank tractor up in Potts, you know, up in Sullivan County? I forget what county it was. So, there's something that you gentlemen and others say, it wasn't this road department, it was a past road department, not for this road. I'm just saying accountability, you know, and that's what comes back on you and ladies.
Does the township have a so-called township engineer, full-time?
Yes, Chris Delapena.
Okay. Well, I'll give you personally to check on whatever happens with construction, right?
Absolutely.
Can he use full-time and not just contracted for coming out for inspections?
Not to zone you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's all gonna have to be dedicated up here anyway, so it's gonna be going up and checking out.
Yeah, Manchester Farms.
I think that's face number four, that Bob's talking about. We looked at debt three years ago, they're gonna have to probably come in there and clean it out before they dedicate the... We looked at debt three years ago, they're gonna have to probably come in there and clean the house before they dedicate the, you know, Manchester Farms.
It's none of the catch bases that being maintained.
Thank, thank you.
That's something to go out to.
The one, Westchester Road, the same way, and I just wanna know. I got a phone number, my phone number, if you wanna tell Chris, and then I can tell him, he can call me if I'm over there. So I'll be home, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, whatever he wants. Thank you.